All right.
Call the meeting to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a statement in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act?
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting of the council was provided by transmitting a copy of the meeting notice to the Madison Eagle and the Morris County Daily Record, posting a copy on the bulletin board at the main entrance of Borough Hall, and filing a copy in the office of the clerk, all on January 16, 2014. Copies of said notice were made available to members of the general public.
Roll call.
Mayor Conley.
Here.
Mr. Calonello.
Here.
Mr. Landrigan.
Here.
Mrs. Vitale.
Here.
Ms. Bailey.
Here.
Mr. Walkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Rowe.
Here.
All right, agenda review. Basically, two main items we'll be covering, going over the electric utility budget, and then we will have a little, what we're calling Budget 101, just explaining a piece that's being handed out here, and then we'll go into our Town Hall meeting format. During the Town Hall meeting, there'll be open discussion, so where you see the invitation for public comment, limited to three minutes, that is just a standard agenda item, that's not related to the Town Hall meeting. We'll have more free-flow discussion as we get into that, and if we have, if the bus pulls up with more people, we'll break into groups as we do it, but if not, we will do it in a single group here. Also, to keep in mind, in the theme of, we are working on the budget, we have budgeted time, not only dollars, so we have budgeted two hours for this meeting, and the goal is to be completed by 12 noon, because then the stomachs start growling at that point. So we'll be going through the utility budget in about a half hour, and then into the Town Hall meeting. Also want to just point out that if Ostry suddenly stands up and walks around, it's not that she's making a statement or taking a sudden walkabout, but she is recovering from back surgery, and she needs to stretch periodically, so please, we don't hesitate to stand up and do your walkabout.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay, let's get on to electric utility budget.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Robert and I will be presenting the document. I hope everyone in the audience was able to grab this document, so we'll start the electric. And we'll start with it. Page one, we're going to talk the majority of my short briefing right here on electric utility surplus, and then the performance of the utility from the past and what we're projecting into the future. And I'd like to just go line item by line item down here and talk just a minute about it. The first schedule we have up top is the surplus balance, and we'll talk about the four lines that we have there. This is as one on the municipal side, same concept of a bathtub, where there's a certain amount of money that's going into the bathtub and a certain amount of money.
Thank you, sorry about that. And so with this particular schedule, line two says, "Less utilized municipal budget." Let's take a look at that. This is the amount of money that the utility transferred from the utility to the municipal operating budget. You can see that there has been kind of an evolution from higher levels in 2006, 2007, certain drop-off in 2010 where we had to correct ourselves due to the new contract, and now we're getting back to a more sustainable 2011, 12, 13, 3, 5, 3, 7. We're projecting, obviously, a higher amount in 2014, and we'll talk about that in a minute. So that's the amount that's going out of the bathtub. The amount that's coming into the bathtub, or into the account, is what's added or generated in the current year, and that number is derived from the performance chart below. As you can see, certain years, the utility has generated almost $6 million over, in 2007. In one year, it actually generated, didn't generate any money, it actually lost money that year. We knew that was happening, it was a slow phase into the new contract. So you can see what happens to the balances when you have the generation of surplus going up and down over various years. Our goal over 2011, 12, and 13 was to stabilize and utilize only an amount that we thought reasonably, with reasonable confidence that we would use. So if you look at 2011, 12, and 13, utilized in the budget versus added that year, you can see that we've been conservative, and as such, we've been able to grow the balance. The bottom line on this first chart says balance at year-end, that's the balance in the account. We've finally been able to grow that back up to closer to more historic figures. Obviously, if you look at 2009, dropping at 2.7 million was, was very, you know, that's why we had to take the rate action when we did, was because the balances were just heading, going to head into the negative, which you can't have in the municipal world.
Jim, one question.
Yes, Pat.
In the past couple of years, we've had to take money out of the utility for emergencies, and we're getting the money back now from FEMA. Is that included in the money utilized in the municipal budget?
Pat, we were fortunate.
Mike, microphone.
I'm sorry.
Pat, we were fortunate enough, we did not declare any emergency appropriations.
But the revenues that were used from the utility to pay for the Superstorm Sandy cleanup, what happens then, is that's going to flow back as a FEMA reimbursement?
That is correct, yes.
Which goes straight to municipal, so.
But my, so some of the money that we use for the municipal budget is the money that we had to take out one time for the emergency, whatever you want to call it. I thought it was an emergency, maybe it's not.
Yes. In 2012, we received $410,000.
No, I'm just talking about the money we took out right now.
So the question is?
Well, it all went into surplus, so the answer is yes.
No, I think the question, first part of the question is, where does the expenses in the emergency show up on this sheet? Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, and?
I guess my, I guess my, my actual recommendation would be, it would be helpful to break that out as a separate line item, so we can see what's kind of recurring surplus that comes out versus what is one time that we need to use for special purposes.
We'll work on that, Pat, and bring it to the off-line. We'll be able to do that, it won't be easy, but we'll be able to do something at least illustrative. So we, we have a good summary here of what's going on with the surplus in the electric utility, and it's heading in a positive direction. Below, we have the actual schedule of electric utility sales and performance, and Robert and I really kind of had to work on creating something that, that would make sense, because municipal utility accounting is very challenging. It actually doesn't make sense if you actually look at it from a business standpoint. So if you opened up one of our audits, or opened, you're just going to look at, it doesn't, doesn't make any sense. So what we actually did here, from a summary standpoint, is we actually have actual revenues, and then appropriated expenses, and the cancellation of prior-year appropriation reserves then trues it up the following year. I don't want to get too far into the weeds on that, but that's, that's where the actual ends up, truing up on the expense side. So for the revenues, it's all actual, for the expenses, it's appropriated. So I think it's worth taking a look line by line here. Cash collections is, is how much people paid to the electric utility for their electric consumption, and as you can see, it started out at 14.5 million, we're now at 23 million. Obviously, the rate action that was taken in 2009, and then the latter half, 2010, 2008, 9, 10, is where you see the increase. Miscellaneous revenue and fund balance realized, what that is, why that's so high, too, Robert and I actually had to really kind of hustle around and take a look at it, is we had high balances in 2006, '07, and '08, and we had a very favorable interest rate that we received on balances. So that's why you're seeing the miscellaneous revenue dropping so much, because the balances have dropped and interest rates are extremely low right now. So we don't anticipate going forward, as you look at the estimates, the miscellaneous revenue to be anything of significance. Cancellation of prior-year appropriations is exactly that. We'll appropriate a certain amount of money for admin, operating, and purchase power, and we appropriate that, but the following year, or is it two years, Robert? It's two years, right?
One year.
It's one year, okay. So different than municipal surplus, where you wait two years, one year?
Both one year.
Oh, both one year, okay. So it's a two-year, it's a two-year delay. So the prior-year appropriations will be from two years ago. We have the close of the books, a year to pay off the final bills, and then the cancellation. So looking across, you can see what's happened to cash collections, you can see what's happened to Myrna, what's happened to collection of prior-year appropriations, and then below, purchase power. Purchase power is an estimate number, as I said. Robert makes an estimate to begin of the year, sometimes we have to adjust it, but we really would prefer to be conservative on what we're estimating, and then just have it cancel in, in the future years. Admin and operating is all the expenses from internally, from billing, and externally, from the men in the field, and even a portion of certain admin salaries and engineering salaries are charged off to the utility, because a fair amount of people in Borough Hall are using at least part of their time in the utility. And electric capital, that's a drawdown that we're, that we take every year and deposit into, into electric utility capital funds. So when Mike wants to buy a Digger Derrick, that's where that money's coming from, it's coming from a separate pot. So when we have capital, and we talk about capital, we have municipal operating budget, which is the regular budget, we have municipal capital budget, we also have an electric operating budget, and we also have an electric capital budget. So when Michael's coming asking for materials, or asking for a Digger Derrick truck, or like, if we needed a new substation, you know, it should be coming out of that, it should be coming out of that pot. So the, are there any, let's, let's take a quick look at our estimates here, and then we're going to go more deeply into them. The estimates for 2014 and '15, we'll talk about it in a few minutes. Robert and I are estimating cash collections about 500,000 less. In a few pages, you'll see what Pfizer Gerald V five consumes, and they, they are about 1.2 to 1.4 million dollars a year in cash collections, and that building is, is being repurposed, and a new tenant will be coming hopefully soon, but for the moment, that building is empty. And so because of that, we dropped down cash collections in the future by 500,000. I could argue we could have dropped it down more, and we might be coming back in a month from now saying that number's good, or that we need to be, we need to maybe tweak that a little bit. Purchase power is actually a number that is a couple of pages in, it's the third page in. We worked with American Power Net to estimate our purchasing going forward. So the numbers that you see, 13, 7, 5, 0, and 11, 5, 7, 6, they're the purchase power for 2014 and '15. Those numbers have been estimated by us, by our, by our professionals. Admin and operating is, as we talked about before, it's in the field. We pushed up electric utility capital just a little bit, because we think it's important to have a reasonable capital pot. Michael's obviously making a significant drawdown with the Digger Derrick and, and alike. So with that, I'd like to see if there's any questions on general performance, and just so you know what we're going to do, we're going to talk about history, the next sheet, Robert's going to go deeply into that. We might, we'll review the top 50 customers and talk about Pfizer, and, and then we'll talk a little bit about what the future contracts are going to look like.
I just have two questions. One, the purchase power, that's based on volatility, meaning that's assuming that the supply of electric?
Stays where it is right now, and the cost could actually go up or down depending upon what happens at the spot.
Can you say that again, Bob? I couldn't hear it quite.
The purchase pa, purchase power?
Yep.
That, to a large extent, is based upon what they project we can buy it for, but that's also subject to volatility in the market.
Correct. We'll talk a little bit about that.
Okay.
In a bit, there's a list of the contracts that we have. For finance people, we're about 96% hedged. We buy blocks of energy, and at any one time, let's say, take, next year at this time, we may have bought 18 megawatts, or 18 megawatts of power for this hour to be consumed by the town.
Right.
If we consume 17, we're going to sell, we're going to automatically sell a megawatt back. That's what the, the company that manages our portfolio will do. If on that particular hour, we consume 19.2 megawatts, we're going to be buying on the spot market.
Right.
That difference between the sell and the buy is that 4% that's unhedged, and that's where the volatility can occur.
Gotcha.
And since you mentioned it, it's worth asking. I was talking to Rob Calonello, and Rob Mutone, and others that, that monitor some of these markets. Natural gas has had some significant volatility over the last few days, and I actually included a headline in here back from January 21, in the second page that shows the contracts, that talks about the volatility in the market. As I talked about, we, we buy megawatt-hours of energy, and we buy these blocks. If you look at the contracts, I'm just going to have everybody jump to the second handout here, you can see that the contracts range from 59, 56 to $44. That's per, that's per megawatt-hour. If you look at the next sheet over, you can see, if we had to go out on the spot market and cover that little hedge on the front, or, or if we're fortunate enough to sell.
Unhedged amount.
What's that?
The unhedged.
The unhedged, cover, the unhedged amount. It, it was trading 300, 500, even up to $1,000 because of the cold snap. The cold snap was drawing a tremendous amount of natural gas, and was actually causing a lot of stress on the electric grid, because there are people that use, consume, a lot of that electricity is consumed more when it's, when it gets cold. So that, that's volatility that we need to be able to absorb, and it's totally different than our current full requirements contract. Right now, full requirements, whatever happens on the spot market, it doesn't matter.
Right.
But come June 1 of this year, it, it's going to matter, so we need to account for it, and we have accounted for it, and in a contingency line item, and we have American Power Net has accounted for it. I sent out to the elected officials a draft budget from American Power Net. It's not included in the handouts. It's very detailed, and anyone who really wants to get deeply into the weeds, Pat, Carmella, anyone else, happy to go over kind of the line item by line item, how it works.
All right.
And another question?
Yeah. Well, it's more of a comment, and I apologize, I didn't know that this was going to be covered here. I just received an email, actually, it was yesterday, from the federal government, that some future FEMA reimbursements, God forbid we get into the storm, in regards to electric, may be predicated on what we've done to improve our electric grid. So that number may actually have to go up a bit, at some point.
And I notified Mike Piano, because that, that email also referenced the need to have a, a full inventory of the system.
Yep.
So we could have an inventory beforehand to show that we actually had that.
Exactly, yeah.
And it got washed away, or damaged, or whatever. So Mike Piano's aware of that.
Pat's got it.
Oh, I'm sorry, Pat.
That's fine. One quick question. The APN analysis, did they base that on our actual usage over a period of years, hour by hour, minute by minute, and compare it to what we would have had to do, so they could see where we were going to have to go by on the spot market?
Yes.
And then they were estimating on that, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Jim, can I ask you a question about, going back to the cash collections, in 2014, you said there are about $500,000 less because of Pfizer, but you also made the comment that it's actually more than that.
Well, I?
What's the usage, what was the usage at Pfizer when it's fully?
It was fun. I fortunately, God bless Jay Healy, we got him over to Pfizer yesterday, and got him in to read the meter yesterday. And if you look to the chart that says Pfizer, I think it's the last, second to last one, you'll see their monthly consumption, their monthly bill, if you will, and you can see that it's 1.4 to 1.5 million a year. The December read is a little bit of an anomaly, because that was a little bit longer than typical, because when they actually sold the building, it was like when you sell your house, or when you move out of your apartment, you do the final reading. They did a final reading there. Instead of it being like $100 for your apartment, it was like $50,000 for the, for the corporation. So it's a little bit inflated there, but this number, that, the 97, 3, 1, 1, is December 27 to January 27 read, and, no, January 30th read, because it was just yesterday. So that's, that's a full month consumption. If you asked me to go to Atlantic City and guess what that number would have been, I would have guessed it would have been $50,000. So we're not quite sure why their consumption hasn't dropped, because the building has been, as we understand it, completely empty since the beginning of the year. So you figure less people, air condition, you know, less computers and alike. So they may get that bill and go in there and start turning off the lights.
Okay, well.
So, so, so we're not, we're not sure, and we're hopeful that before we have to do our final strike of the budget, we're going to have another month of read, and try to figure out what that impact's going to be.
Pat?
Terms of that, I mean, we're adjusting the amount that we expect to generate revenue, or we're also going to drop the amount we're going to spend on the electric, since, you know, we only get a certain percentage of whatever we sell?
Yep. We, we have a, we have the budgeted power amount, and a lot of that is driven by the block contracts that we've already purchased. So in essence, that true-up will happen in two ways. That true-up will happen if we don't consume as much, and then it gets sold, and that falls to our, falls to our bottom line and reduces our bill, our actual bill. Remember, this is an estimated bill here, number one. And number two, it will fall in the cancellation of the prior-year appropriations when it cancels out a year later. Because we, we really don't know exactly what's going to happen to Pfizer, we didn't talk to American Power Net and say, hey, we might need to adjust what's, what's going on here.
When we sell back, let's say we're paying $50, what are we typically selling back at? Is it in the same range, or is it this?
It's a spot market, and it could, if we were selling back three days ago, we could have been getting $1,000, it would have been, we'd have been making money. We're not allowed to arbitrage, by the way, I'm just saying.
Be clear.
If not arbitrage, it's called speculative trading, but that's.
Very right.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
But we're not allowed to actively do that, but typically, Pat, it will come in at an LMP number, and I can actually get you a website and get anybody a website. You can go on and see where PJM is trading at the West Hub, which is, and the zone, even, I think, the JCPL Zone, but it's going to be less than what we bought of that.
Yeah, I mean, I was thinking about this. Because we're kind of entering a brave new world, I think we're going to have to keep track of a lot more information and a lot more ratios, like what we're paying versus what we're selling for. So each year, we can tighten up the budget a bit, because I, we don't have any real experience in this, and, but the more I looked at this last night, in this short period of time I had it, the more I thought about the fact that we need a lot of details to run this business now that we're in kind of a fluctuating price market.
We're fortunate that we have the other municipalities that have already been using this type of purchasing model for a few years, so we can template off them and learn from them, but we do have a contingency built in, and I'm happy to give as much information as, as people want in terms of how this is going to work, but it will take, there'll be a lot more analysis going on.
One other question. These draft budget planning years have some dates from years ago. Is that when they were actually provided to us? I mean, one says 2, 1, 12.
Yeah, that, I?
The other says 11, 17, 13.
I spoke to him this morning, I have a newer, that's the documents that people didn't get, except Council were emailed last night. We have a newer, updated one, but it's, it's, it hasn't changed much. It's just more broken out in detail, and the reason it actually hasn't changed much is the LMP or spot market hasn't really changed terribly. If you go to the second handout that has the contracts, and then flip to the very last chart, this is going to show you where the futures are, but it gives you an indication as to where the spot market and where the market is trading, and it's trading in that, that 40 to 50 mile dollar per megawatt-hour band. It actually hasn't changed much, so those estimates didn't change much, but I do have a refreshed number from him from a month and a half ago.
Could they also structure this in a way that makes sense? I mean, unless they're, they're labeling these wrong, these, these dates make no sense. They're showing 20, 16 before 15, and?
Yep. They, they start, you have to start in the middle and go this way, and then come back to the beginning of the chart and work your way over. It's just the way they, they do it. What, what we're going to do in the future, I think, is Robert and I are going to take that and make it into a more understandable number. We, we have obviously a very simplified version. In this document here, it says estimated power purchase budget, but it doesn't have the split-outs of all the different items that impact it.
No, and the details, I think, are very important. This is, all the items we're going to have to track going forward is actuals. And I will come in and talk to you guys in more detail about what this all means, because I'm not going to take up a lot of time, there's, there's too many lines. It would also be nice if they turned the damn chart sideways, so you could read it. Thanks.
Yeah, a little landscape. We need some landscaping.
Yeah, I agree.
Especially with the dark background, I can't read.
So, you know, what I'd like to do now, if there aren't, oh, sorry.
Thanks. So I just have one quick question. First of all, thank you, Jim, for all of your hard work. You too, Robert, this is very thorough. I agree with Council President Landrigan. I think our electric utility capital surplus needs to be increased, and I would recommend that we look at doing that this year, regardless of what happens with FEMA. I think, you know, we do have some aging equipment. I remember last year, two years ago, we had a scare with some of the transformers. Thank God, we could just rewind them as opposed to have to replace them. I, I am fully agree with that. Regarding your sheet?
On that number, Rob, it's, so that's the 200 number that we have there, you're thinking 153?
Yeah, I mean, what, that, like, when I asked Mike how much it would cost to replace a transformer, we don't know, because they don't make them anymore.
Scary number, it's a scary number.
Yeah, they're scary numbers. Yeah, so I mean, I, I would think probably we should look at doing it as some sort of a fixed percentage of the total surplus generated with the floor. I will think more about that, but, you know, I, you know, maybe a floor of 200, and, and try to do, you know, 5 or 6% of the totally, of the total surplus generated. But that, I think we should talk to Mike Piano about that, he's probably?
And we can do that. You can say, hey, if surplus next year generates more than blank.
Yeah.
You know, we'll put 200 in, but if we generate more than?
Yes.
300,000 more than we used.
Yes, and then, and then once we get to a certain level where we think we're good, we can scale back on it, but I totally agree.
That also kind of goes back to our strategic planning, as they can, yep.
Sure, we'll hear from that. Now, the only other question I have is, if I look at your Borough of Madison summary block purchase power contracts, the, the stuff we bought for this year, starting June 1, it's, it equals 100%, right?
Well, it equals 100%.
Of our estimated. So the 4% unhedged, that's just our risk management number that we think, so, okay, so if we estimate the purchases in 2014 to be $14 million, let's say, 4% of 14 million is what, 560,000. So we've got 560,000, we think, in variability of what we may have to pay for, you know, for, for this on either side?
Yeah, there's, there, we, we're, we have a healthy contingency in there, and in regard to the capital needs, I could argue that.
No, I'm, I'm just talking about the actual purchase power. So if in 24, so we have 100% of our estimated load hedged. Then we're estimating, we're going to buy 13.75 million dollars worth of power. Our hedge contingent is 4%, if I'm not mistaken. So that's 14, that's 140 times 4 is, anyone, 560. So we've got 560,000, so we think that we could see $560,000 in variability due to us having to buy on the spot, buy or sell on the spot market at disadvantageous rates.
That's what we put in. You actually see the contingency number online.
There's 500, yep.
Three or four, it says 500.
I like that.
The numbers, the numbers, the numbers match.
Excellent math there.
All right, cool.
I want to talk about one thing that's kind of, kind of interesting. Well, go ahead, Rob.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just trying to get, I'm just trying to get, no, I'm not wrong, I'm just squaring it all in my, in my mind, okay?
There's some interesting things that the Public Power Association of New Jersey negotiated decades ago. One of them was the installation of some hydro power for the New York Power Authority and for St. Lawrence, and because New Jersey bordered navigable waters that were being impacted by these upstate dams that were going to generate hydro power, the Board of Public Utility and FERC said, Federal Energy Regulatory Committee, said, "These states should benefit from the generation of that hydro power." So we get a small allocation, and you'll see it on here, NIPA, we get a small allocation from NIPA, and we buy that, we get that energy, that hydro energy at a very, very, very low rate, great rate. And it's just one of the things, being a benefit of the Public Power Association, and what they've been able to negotiate over the years, that we get that benefit. It's a little odd in the way they calculate it. We have to pay them back for their energy, and then we buy it back in a NIPA credit. It doesn't, it doesn't show well on a bill, but in the end, it's, it's just one of those odd things, but one of the benefits of owning our utility.
Okay, all right.
One final question, Jim. When I'm looking back at the five-year capital improvement plan, it shows an electric capital improvement plan of over $800,000 for that, this year, but, so this, 100, $200,000 is showing here for 2013, 2014, that's in addition to that number?
Exactly. So the, the, any capital that you're seeing on the summary budget, that is the single sheet that's there, that's general capital and municipal capital?
No, 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 I'm looking at the five-year capital plan.
Okay.
You, you projected 800,000, $5,000, 805,000 for electric utility for this year.
Yes, yes, correct, and a lot of that is AMR, correct? Always on that?
It doesn't say what it is, but my question is?
Yeah, on the, on the backup documentation to that, $500,000 of that is AMR, and I think we're in the process of really trying to refine how much load loss we have in the system, to attempt to quantify how much is being lost by slow electric meters. When we do that, we're going to come back to Council with a proposal. I'm more comfortable, especially with a large contingency built in here, to consider with the AMR project, financing it, short-term rates are so, so inexpensive. Take the savings and pay it back, and then if we have a contingency, a benefit from the contingency, look to pay it back that way as well. So you're right, we have a, a large use of capital on that line item, and we're not funding it as, we're not fully funding it as such.
So you're, so you're saying the 200 you have here for the estimate? So you're saying the two hundred you have here for the estimate is six hundred thousand short of that number that you have on the sheet?
That's the funding line as opposed to spending line.
The funding line as opposed to spending line, yep.
Yeah, I was just going to add that depending on the results of the analysis that Jim alluded to, which is to see how much leakage we have in our electric distribution system, the break even on the cost of AMR could be very short, a matter of a couple of years. So that's a critical number. And if it is that short, then financing it using bond anticipation notes is probably a good idea.
And I would add, there could be a similar strategy taken if we choose to develop generation here in town. We went down to Seaside and looked at their diesel generators. We have a consultant looking at natural gas generation being placed in town. And if we had that generation in town and had worked out an arrangement with PJM to bid it in last week, we could have turned on the generators, probably would have cost us about thirty dollars a megawatt hour to generate a megawatt, and we could have been receiving a thousand dollars back from the grid. So that would have accelerated the payback on those units, those units are expensive. We've been talking very recently about natural gas versus diesel. And with the constraints of natural gas, and I know some council members were getting generators installed in their homes and they're talking about not able to deliver natural gas to it, we're maybe looking back towards diesel again. Another benefit of the diesel is each unit has three thousand gallons storage capability there. So if we were in a situation where we didn't need electricity, but we were running out of diesel, there was a shortage of diesel, we could actually use that for our vehicles as an emergency storage.
Ben, and then we're going to try and be mindful of time so we can keep things moving. So Ben and Carmella and Jim go on to the next.
Sure, I was just going to quickly add that I'm a great proponent of self-generation. The numbers on it are a little more difficult than AMR. And so we're going through now a third iteration. I hope that we come up with a solution that we can bring to the council and make sense.
Carmella?
Yeah, I wanted to talk a little bit about the automatic self-generation too. I've had some conversations with Mike Piano, and as you said, if we had the generators that were in place. So it's going to make a very big difference in that two hundred thousand dollars that we expected. If we make that decision, because Mike's concept is it's a couple of million dollars to think about it. So, you know, hopefully, the Strategic Electric Committee will take that into consideration and see if that number needs to be bumped up because it's, you know, two hundred thousand dollars is not a lot of money. I agree with Rob there. The expense of what they need in that department is awesome.
Our budget clearly assumes financing if we were to go out with two large projects like that, or if we had a transformer fail.
Well, we've had two transformers fail, like within the last month, that big huge one over at Chateau Tiere.
Oh, we're talking about our substation.
These are the substations that they made in the forties.
But the smaller transformers too, like all over town, they're starting to go. Everything is starting to age, that's, you know, so.
Okay, we'll revisit that.
So we're forty minutes in, just so you can.
I'd like to jump to the historical numbers and I'll have Professor Califfut go through them.
Ben and Jim recommended that we construct a historical financial perspective of the electric utility. So I went back seventeen years, and I'd like to, I'd like to take you through some of the numbers, and I'd like to discuss with you and share with you the seven different purchase power contracts. For many decades, could be fifty, sixty, seventy years, Madison was required to purchase all their full requirements from the host utility, which at the time was Jersey Central Power and Light. Energy deregulation occurred January one, nineteen ninety-three. During nineteen ninety-three, the Public Power Association as a group went out for bids. We selected a supplier, which was a sister company of Jersey Central Power and Light at the time, which was owned by General Public Utilities. And it was a Western Pennsylvania utility, Pennsylvania Electric. The cost of purchase power for the first year went down thirty-six percent. That contract was in place, I believe, nineteen ninety-four, nineteen ninety-five, six, seven, and eight. I'd like to refer, please refer to the schedule of the electric utility historical. Let's look at the fourth column, actual appropriations. In nineteen ninety-seven, the cost of purchase power, as well as the all other appropriations to operate the utility, was five million, five hundred and eighty-five thousand. Through growth in the system, that increased to six point two, six point one million. In nineteen ninety-eight, we were informed by General Public Utilities and Pennsylvania, Western Pennsylvania, Pennalec, that the contract was going to terminate. So we had a short-term purchase power contract with, at the time, PICA, which was Philadelphia Electric Company. You can see the bump in purchase power from six point one million to six point six to six point nine million. That contract ended, and we had a three-year contract with Allegheny Electric. You can see the significant increase from six point nine million to eight point nine, ten million and nine point nine million. That ended. In two thousand and three, we entered into agreement with a public service electric and gas. That contract was in place for three years, two thousand and five, six, and seven. During those three years, you can see the electric utility surplus to the right-hand column there increased almost six million, four point seven million, five point nine million. Then in two thousand and eight, and part of nine, we were into a very short-term contract with Detroit Edison. And you can see the significant increase in purchase power from ten million to, ten point three million all the way to eighteen and a half and eighteen point nine million. And then that contract ceased in May thirty-first of two thousand and nine. And from that time forward, we have been in contracts with Constellation. Let's look at the electric surplus balance column. I'm sorry, just, let's just focus on the surplus generated. You can see historically, nineteen ninety-seven all the way through two thousand and one, the financial results were quite impressive, low of four point four million, a high of five point four million. The PICO contracts and the Allegheny contracts cut very deeply into a reduction in the surplus. You can see it went from five million, one seventy-six to three point six million, one point nine, and then to three. And then the PSENG contract at much lower rates allowed us to generate significantly large amounts of surplus. Then the Detroit Edison contract, the surplus was significantly reduced to two point four million, and then in two thousand and nine, actually ran at a deficit. The rate action that occurred in eight, nine, and ten was, was done in order to get the electric utility to generate approximately four and a half million. The electric utility surplus balance, look at the year two thousand and eight, nine, and ten, please. The balance at the end of eight was eight million, nine fifty-nine. That, the surplus got cut in half to four and a half and then further reduced to two point seven million, and eleven, twelve, and thirteen recovered. The significant reduction in the surplus from eight point nine million to four point five to two point seven, there's a domino effect there. If you'd look at, to the municipal surplus column, which is the second column in, as the surplus was greatly reduced in the electric utility, the domino effect was more surplus, more municipal surplus was taken down. So that got drawn down, as you can see, to seven, from eight point nine million at the end of eight, down to seven point eight, down to six million, down to four point four. So there is a domino effect. The lessons that we have learned here is that the electric utility surplus is indeed quite a catalyst on how it affects our municipal tax rate, the services, the capital. So when you're having your discussions regarding the rate structure here, just keep in mind that these domino events will occur.
I pointed this out to Jim last night on a different set of numbers, but the numbers that you're presenting on this chart are not tying back to the numbers on this chart. And I'll give you two examples. The surplus, I'm even looking at the wrong number, hang on a second, I got to up here. Balance at the end of the year. No, that number's right, I'm sorry. It's the purchase, the total appropriations, what does that equal on the budget? It's not purchased power, it doesn't even seem to be all the lines added together. Which is, you know, the actual appropriation, nineteen, zero, one, two, and twenty thirteen.
These are the budgeted appropriations.
Oh, budgeted?
Budgeted, yes.
What says actual appropriations, though?
Well, it, they are the actual, and as Jim was trying to explain, in the world of utility accounting, you use the budget appropriations as the actual. You carry the appropriations one year later and then they get canceled.
Change that title, good catch, Pat.
I do agree about one thing, though. This is probably the most important part of the budget because it is both our biggest opportunity and our biggest risk going forward. I mean, and it has been in the past as well. We saw what happened in the, you know, two thousand and eight through whatever cycle where we had to pay a lot more money for electricity, and it severely impacted capital, the expense budget, everything. So I think this is the most important thing, that we get accurate. And, you know, one of the things I think we had discussed several weeks ago, Jim, was both a kind of a best case and worst case scenarios. I'm not sure if the APN numbers are an average case, a best case, or a worst case, but it would be helpful, I think, if the council saw kind of like what we should expect to see and sort of like what the outside worst case, reasonable worst case scenario is.
And there's a.
Reasonable worst case.
Sorry?
Reasonable worst case.
Worst case is, you know, gas goes to a million dollars, foot or something, and.
But it's the importance of having the two separate columns, which is the electric transfer, the operating and capital. We can, this council and future councils can deal with fluctuations to funding capital. You have to make some tough decisions about investing in projects at a current year, but fluctuations to operating are far more difficult to deal with. And so that's where, you want to base that on the best case, worst case scenario.
And that's actually the scariest number because even the best case scenario is, is only good for two or three years because that's as far out as we're hedged. So, you know, realistically, three years out, we could see that evaporate. And, you know, again, in two thousand and eight, the reason you had a negative number in terms of money you were taking out was because you actually absorbed a good chunk of the rate increase without passing it on to the right person.
Right, yeah, there is a decision to let, kind of do the rate increase over a couple of years.
That's the worst case, that things go up so dramatically that, you know, not only can't we continue to fund operating, but we actually have to cut a lot of things because we've overestimated, we're overestimating how long that's going to go on for.
Yeah, I think, I think that year Seaside saw, was it Seaside that had like a ninety-seven percent increase in electric rates, which, and they were in a similar contract, and so we had opted to do the leveling for the residents. Ben?
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to point out, if you look at the electric transfers to operating, it's pretty constant. Volatility in that number is very slight. Where it came off is in capital.
Capital, which is.
And we're paying a price for that. So I'm personally, I'm less concerned about the operating piece. I think that's, I can't imagine a worst case that gets us to a point where we can't satisfy operating, although it could happen. But the electric transfers being dashes for so many years is a real problem and we're reaping it right at the moment.
I mean, this year, we are transferring another.
This year? It's, we haven't done it yet, this is the budget.
Well, but it's proposed, and once you do it, you have to maintain it, otherwise you have to look to cut services.
Well, it didn't happen from two thousand and eight to two thousand and twelve.
It's not cut services, it's a decision to delay capital projects.
We didn't, we didn't cut services, what we cut was maintenance.
Yep.
Services were not, I mean, we cut services slightly, but that was because we were eating into surplus to an extent that was really untenable. But what we really got hit on was capital.
I understand that.
We were funding capital through non-recurring income, which is a pretty scary proposition, and fund balance, which is just about to go to zero this year.
But if you look at this, you know, even in the good years, we were transferring just one amount, three hundred thousand dollars, three million dollars, rather. And then as it ramped up, that was fine, and then suddenly we had to cut back by eight hundred thousand dollars in operating in one year. And that did hit severely.
Yep.
We don't want to, you know, repeat that problem.
So with, again.
Right, we cut back on capital without impacting what people see on a day-to-day basis, but.
Trying to budget our time, but, Rob, and I want to see where, how much more we need to cover here.
I, you know, I just want, again, to thank everyone for the hard work that they've done. I would say the budgets, at least for this year, don't include any sort of rate cut despite the big growth in surplus. And I know that that's still a question for the future. I think as a council, we know each other well enough now where we can disagree and not take it personally because I disagree with that. Furthermore, given that we're projecting in excess of a seven million dollar surplus for twenty fifteen, again, I assume that assumes no rate cut, I would be loath to go back to the taxpayer and ask him to borrow money, even if interest rates are low, to fund any sort of, you know, meter or whatever, some of the stuff we were talking about doing. I think we should pay as we go, and I'm sure we'll talk more about this on Monday. But, you know, there's got to get to be some point where the residents, who, and I agree with Ben's comment from Monday, some of our residents are facing an affordability issue here. They suffered on the way up, and they need to, they need to enjoy the benefit, you know, when we're on the way down. I think the work that's been done has been fantastic. I look forward to the results of the Strategic Planning Committee. You know, it's a very thorough exercise, much different than my first year on council a couple of years ago. But again, I think that the taxpayer and the resident deserves some sort of benefit. And if we're going to be throwing off so much surplus, I don't want to borrow. So just so it's out there. And again, it's nothing personal, it's just, it's my view, that's how I'm going to vote.
I think it's good to put out there, I think just to keep things moving for now is, because there are a lot of elements to this. And the two key elements for today's discussion is what gets transferred, transferred to operating and capital. I think if I hear the, hear everyone, I think that there is a good comfort level for what is transferred for this year is good because it helps deliver the major capital projects we need to do, and it's a reasonable amount into operating. There needs to be a look at what are the other surpluses and what is a reasonable amount? And, and they're actually, stay tuned, audience, because there is some questions related to, to generate some discussion from the audience on this topic, so we can catch that.
Well, you made a statement that you said you felt there's good comfort. I will say, I am not really comfortable at this point with the money going to the operating. I'm fine with the capital, but I want to take a harder look at that.
Okay.
I'm deferring to the audience. I have nothing to say. I just took a look at my watch and we really need to move it along.
Yeah, so, so what, do we have any more on the?
One last parting point, Mayor, to button up exactly what you said. We have a two thousand and fourteen estimate of surplus of about five point five million. And if you go back to the budget here, we're using about five point seven million. So we're actually using a little more in surplus than we think we're going to generate. We do have some contingencies built in there and alike, so we're bumping right up against what we think we're going to generate in terms of what's going to get put back into municipal budget.
All right, thank you. So Ben, a very quick.
Yes, Budget 101, very quickly. A couple of points I hope to run through. A couple of, a couple of points I hope to run through.
Are we, are we journeying into town hall, or are we
This is, this will be a very quick, and then we're going to do a
Apologize, just procedural.
Yep.
Yeah, sure. Does everyone has this? So we don't need slides, good. This is a very, obviously a very simple approach, a scaled-down approach to showing you what a municipal budget's like. There are just a couple of points I hope we come away with. One is that although it's often the case that people talk about a municipal budget as if it's their household budget, to my way of thinking, the only thing they have in common is they're based on money. Most everything else is quite different. And the other point I'd raise is, you look at the revenue side, and you look at the expenses side, and if you want to do something on the revenue side, you've got to do something on the expense side. And I think we often are focusing on revenue for the obvious reason. I mean, it gives you the capacity to spend, but we really need to also focus on how much we're spending. And in doing that, where I find myself in this discussion, and where I hope the audience chimes in, is that we really need to understand what kind of Madison we want to live in. The Madison we currently live in spends a lot of this budget on services, as you see on the right-hand side. And from anecdotal evidence, and perhaps more importantly, third-party objective evidence, we do a heck of a job. Congratulations to our police, we're number nine in the state in terms of safety. Congratulations to our fire department, who constantly gets lauded for what they do. So I'm, you know, I'm not ready to make any cuts, certainly. Unfortunately, this council's had to do that, as those of you who put out your trash once a week instead of twice know. But I did want you to have an understanding of all of the things we pay for. And it's quite a list, and indeed, we enumerated it in more detail on the following page. If you turn it over, it has municipal surpluses and municipal capital programs. So if I go down the list very quickly, if I look at revenues, municipal property taxes are obviously a very large part of the budget, but we have little control over them. We are now capped at two percent. And I think that's good, but on the other hand, it does give you a constraint in what you can do in raising money through increases in property taxes. Our electric utility, what we're calling profit, and the reason it's in parentheses, in quote marks, I mean, is because surplus is more common, and in some camps, fund balance just to make life terrible. So you don't know what anyone's talking about. But for profit, I think we understand that it's the difference between what it costs us to operate the utility and what we collect in fees for the provision of electricity. And that is a substantial part of the total revenue as proposed in this year's budget. We finally have, I'm sorry, we have two more things. We have fees and other revenues. Fees, you know, you pay for parking permit, you pay for construction permit. There are fees for lots of activities that don't affect everyone, but you need them, and so you pay specifically for them. And then we have what we're calling prior year savings, which indeed is surplus. That says, we allocated a certain amount, we appropriated a certain amount in the prior year's budget, we actually used a particular amount, there's a piece left over, that's surplus. So those are our primary sources. Now, I said earlier, one non-recurring source that we've relied on in the past is sale of property. We have sale of property in this year's budget, and we're allocating it to capital. And we may well have sale of property showing up in future budgets, but as I indicated before, I for one think it's too risky to plan on that. If it happened, great. I mean, we've been waiting for Green Village Road to close for a year, and a lot of people were willing to take a flyer on that closing a year ago. And I was against it at that time, and I'm not, I don't want to count it in for this year, because I have no idea what's going on with that. On the municipal services side, besides all of those services, we are capital and debt service. We do have outstanding loans, we have to pay interest and principal on them, but perhaps more importantly, this year, in our focus, is all of the things we have not done. And primarily, that's roads. It's repairing of roads. I, you know, I talk to people who say, Madison's a wonderful town, we provide these great services, people who live here love it, and it's very appealing, it's an easy town to sell people on. My only response to that is, if you're selling your house, I hope you don't live on Belmont, or Academy, or a bunch of other roads that are really torn up. And what I was saying is, so we have a number of roads that are in less than great condition that need to be addressed. We have some equipment in various key parts of what our town does that needs to be replaced. And we have been allocating a relatively small amount of money to capital in the last several years. This year, as I think many of you know, the council has already approved a fairly substantial allocation to take encounter the roads that need work, and we're doing that to get out ahead of the schedule, so we can complete the projects during this year. The only two things that are left out of this that are worth a quick mention are reserve for tax appeals and reserve for uncollected taxes. The reserve for tax appeals this year is probably going to be a little higher, I think it's budgeted to be a little higher, for a couple of reasons, not the least of which is our tax council has suggested we put aside more money, based on historical experience of what happens in the year after, you have a reassessment of properties. And also because there are a couple of fairly substantial properties that are challenging their assessment. And so we really need to reserve for those things. We also have a reserve for uncollected taxes, which basically, although the number goes up because the amount we collect in taxes, both municipal and Board of Ed taxes, has increased, the percentage of our overall budget has remained amazingly constant since nineteen ninety-seven, which is the year that we decided to go back to in doing all kinds of historical analysis. The only other thing I'd like to mention is, I don't believe there's any, I'll go through some other things briefly, but the only other thing I'd like to mention about the budget is, I don't believe there's any difference in objectives among the council members. No one likes paying taxes, me included. No one likes large electric bills, me included. What the discussion is about is how quickly do we do what we hope we can do, which is to reduce both. And there's a risk-return trade-off in everything. And here, the return would be lower taxes, potentially lower utility rates. The trade-off is, do you find yourself short on money at a critical juncture? And so it's a balance. And we're just now, last year, we turned the corner significantly on issues of inadequate surplus, and S and P acknowledged that by improving our rating. I think this year, we now have turned the corner on dealing with our electric utility, which has traditionally been a source of funding for both operating and capital expenses. So, and then I'll add one other note, which is, I for one don't like subjective judgments when it comes to things like budgets. And we have started strategic planning committees, as you heard mentioned, and all of them are charged with coming up with rules that we can apply to future budgets. So in many ways, this strikes me as a transition year. Below that, I'd like to move along. Below that on your sheet, I have, there are a number of questions that the mayor and council would like to know. Please address them during the open session, if you can. The only one I'd like to point out to you is the blue one on the left, which notes that, assuming the school board increased their budget by two percent, how much would municipal taxes have to drop for your property, property tax bill not to go up? The answer is five point one percent. We'd have to have to drop it by that amount. So if you're looking for a decrease in your property tax, you're at the wrong meeting. I mean, there's no other way to get around it. We are twenty-four percent of the total. And what we do certainly impacts the overall property tax, but doesn't have nearly the impact you might think. In the chart below, we showed the difference between decreasing property taxes and decreasing electric rates by two hundred and fifty thousand. And we did it for, these are actual people, names not to be mentioned. We took their property taxes and their annual electric bill, and we showed what their savings would be. You need, below that, I don't want this to be misleading, because it would suggest that you're always better off decreasing property taxes. Not true, it depends on where you are in the tax, in your tax rate, and because property taxes are tax deductible, electricity rates are not. And I put down a list of pros and cons for electric rate reduction versus property tax reduction. You know, your vote is as good as mine. The only one I point out to you is the very last one. We found there's a high concentration among electric, electric utility users versus property taxpayers. But what I mean by that is, if you take the top fifty in each, the top fifty electric revenue providers or electric utility users account for forty-two percent of the total. So you have fifty clients who fund forty-two percent of the total electric tax bill. On the property tax side, you take the top fifty property taxpayers, you come up with twelve percent of the total. So what that says to me is, if we reduce property tax by a dollar, eighty-eight cents of it goes out to beyond the top fifty. If we reduce electric rates by a dollar, fifty-eight cents of that dollar goes out to the broader community. So it's an interesting, you know, make of it what you make. To me, it says, high concentration in electricity, something to be aware of when we're trying to decide which rates to deal with. On the, if you turn the page, what I'd like to show on the top is, we talk about our taxes being high. I think the real issue is, New Jersey taxes are high. If you look at this list, you'll see that the per person municipal tax on the left-hand side, looking at our nearby neighbors, we are the lowest. Now, you may wonder why our taxes are so high. In fact, when I, wait a minute, how's Harding so high? We're not including Board of Ed. There's no education tax in here. This is simply municipal budget, municipal taxes. And then what we looked at is municipal services, and if you go across the list, you know, this is like Consumer Reports, right, which one wins? We're yes on everything. And if you look at all the other ones, you'll see that a lot of them either don't provide the service, which means people have to arrange for it themselves, or provided by municipality but at extra cost, or in the case of senior citizens, no van. And that's in three of surrounding communities. So strictly from a dollar and cents perspective, looking at the municipal budget, and looking how our services have been ranked by third-party objective people and organizations, I think we're doing pretty well. And it's hard for me to say that, knowing what my tax bill is. But as I said, I don't think that's a local problem. I think that's a New Jersey problem, and, you know, we can't get away from it any, any better than anyone else in the state can. If you go below that, I've listed out some services, please read them, you know, at your own leisure. It's not, I don't want to take more time away from you all, and certainly, this is self-explanatory. I would like to mention one thing. You have seen a proposed budget. I am inclined to take a little more risk than the administration this year. And although, I don't want to commit to this, but I think it's worth discussing, because I want to get feedback from all of you, what I am aiming to do is take property tax increase this year to zero. So there would be no increase in municipal property taxes. And the reason for that is, one, I think we can afford it. Again, obviously, taking on a little more risk than the administration would like. But the other side is, last year didn't work out the way we'd all hoped. We had the first, the smallest increase in municipal taxes in eleven years, and yet, most of you saw an increase in your tax bill because of the reassessment. Not the way we hoped it would go. The reassessment was not our idea, it was imposed on us. The law's the law, we were late in reassessing. Believe me, if there was one thing we would have preferred not to have done last year, it's to have gone through that process. But we were forced to do it, and we came out in a situation where our residents came off tax-wise worse than we had anticipated. And I think, given, we have the ability to do it, I'd like to see us do it this year. The other issue I'd like to take up is that we talk often about the people who have trouble living in this community because of the cost of living here. But we haven't done much to help them. I would like to propose, and I don't have all of the mechanics worked out, again, I'm doing this just so we can all talk about it, if you wish, that we put aside a sufficient amount of money from the electric utility proceeds, so that every citizen of our town who is eligible for senior freeze, that's what I talked about at the last meeting, it's on our website, and there was a very good and thoroughgoing letter in the Eagle this week. It's basically senior citizens and disabled people. There are income levels below, you have to be below certain income levels. They're not poverty levels, it's eighty thousand dollars, but you have to be below it, and you have to be either a senior or disabled. And what I'm proposing is that we set aside a meaningful pool of money, and I don't have a number for you today, but I mean, but I would like it to be meaningful, and distribute that money to, as a rebate on electric bills to those people. I think it's time to do something for the people who are having the hardest time staying here. And that's what I would propose. I would like to propose a reduction in everyone's electric bill. But I think that's pushing it a little far. We're going into a new regime on electric costs, and as well, as I said, there are risk-return trade-offs, and I don't think we're, we go at this blindly, but we certainly don't have great objective rules that help us to make decisions, and I'd like to see that happen. And I, you know, I'm
With that, Ben, we'll, we'll cut it, yeah, please, we'll throw out some good thoughts for discussion, and we're not going to get into discussing those right now, so we'll tackle that as we, over the next month, as we go through the budget. So, Pat, you had a question?
I probably have like twenty minutes' worth of statements, but I'm going to have to go back and listen to everything Mr. Wolker would say. First of all, I would appreciate if a document like this, that's going to go out, that says what the mayor and council would like to know, somebody asked me for input on it, because I have some questions and some objections about some of the questions, like, would you prefer a more reliable power or a lower electric rate? I think that's a false choice. Second, I would like to know, when we talk more about the electric utility revenue, the last item, do we have to reduce electric rates across the board, or can we target them to certain people or certain categories?
Yeah.
So therefore, we can, we can, we can separate residential from commercial. So we don't have to necessarily target all the money going to one place. The third is the, and I'm just hearing this for the first time, about funding the senior freeze, I'd like to see what the number looks like. I'd also like to know how we're going to pay for that in perpetuity, given that the electric surplus is going to go up and down in the future. And once we commit to that, are we going to subject certain people to, you know, rate shock down the road somewhere? I think the things that we do have to be sustainable, that's why, taking the money out of the electric utility to the extent that we can, and funding capital, although we'd like capital to be as sustainable as possible, it's not as dramatic as either trying to jack people's rates up, or having to cut services seriously if we overuse the money for
I'm going to, okay, Pat
Well, I'm sorry, but Mr. Wolker, which went on for quite a bit of time about
I was scheduled. What is
I was scheduled to go on for quite a bit of time.
Okay, let's, let's
I'm on the agenda.
Pat, you have valid, valid questions there. Some of them were leading into the town hall meeting, and I apologize, I didn't see that in advance. As I said, those are, some of Ben's things were more than one-on-one, but it just, it kind of sets, sets a stage for some discussion, and over the next month, as we make some decisions. And I think it's a
This is a political argument.
Oh, stop it.
Please, it is.
Give me a break.
Ostrich, please.
It is.
Ostrich, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Pat, Pat.
Last person that said the same thing to me.
Okay.
No, this
Point of, point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, hold it.
It said, what is the object of this document? I'm sorry, but it is.
Please, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, point of order, repeatedly, our borough attorney has told us that in an open public meeting, the, while you have the right to control the structure of the meeting, elected officials have the right to speak until their point is made. I would ask that we honor that, I would ask that we honor that decision that was made. I would ask that we honor that, I would ask that we honor that decision that was made previously by our borough attorney. You know, I think we have, we'll have a month to talk about this, and I'd like to digest some of this. But I think if anyone wants to talk, an elected official, they'd be given the right to finish their thought.
I think it was welcome. I'm gonna move on to the town hall meeting at this point. With the, with two things in mind, one, I forgot I don't have water here, and number two, I still need to use the bathroom even though I don't have water, so we're gonna take a five-minute break. It is eleven seventeen, we will regroup at eleven twenty-two and go into town hall meeting, and with all the things that were set up here, we've got some good discussion we're gonna be hearing from the audience. And obviously, as I mentioned, from the council over the next month as we resolve all these things, some need to be resolved over the next month because they are directly part of the budget, some will take more time, such as electric rates and things like that may take more time. As we regroup, the original thought was to have the council out in the audience, but since we have a small group, we're not, we're not gonna be breaking into discussion groups, which I would have had council members sitting there. So I think the easiest thing is we come back in, is you can sit here, so you can observe what's, what's going on. So we'll regroup in five minutes, thank you. Participation part of the, like, the guided participation part of the meeting, which we'll have some questions, and then we'll go into the number six on the agenda, which is invitation for public comment, and that is when you can comment on, on anything. As mentioned before, I was hoping for that bus to pull up with a larger crowd so we could break out into groups, but we will make this work with our smaller group, and I'll, you know, come on down, explain how it's gonna go. So I always like to go over ground rules. One, we have a time constraint, it is now eleven twenty-five, I'm half hour behind schedule, so I think the twelve noon promise is gone, but we'll aim for the twelve fifteen. As we have these discussion questions, keep in mind, there are no right or wrong answers. And someone may say, as you just saw up here, say something that you strongly agree or strongly disagree with, but hold back on those reactions and just share your own personal feelings. And your role in the audience can be what you choose. You can be that person on the left, you can be the one that talks, you can be the person that you're on the right, or you can go back and forth. So there's no, no force on how to behave. And no, I'm not gonna make you clean up. That is what the council, my role right now, is to serve as a sponge and just absorb what And some of this is a little repeat, we can go over very quickly. Again, your taxes, sixty-one percent support the schools, fifteen to the county, and twenty-four percent is what we're talking about. So again, keep in mind, what we're talking about is twenty-four cents on your, on your property tax dollar. And this slide, I'll go very quickly again, just so you understand, because we've talked about this today, we've talked about it last budget meeting, you'll be hearing more and more about it. The slices change a little bit from year to year, but not drastically. You see the property taxes is the biggest slice as far as what supports the borough operations, and we have all these other slices. Couple of things to keep in mind as we look at this pie, is these slices here are all going right back out to support capital. So twelve percent of our sources projected for this year in the budget will go out for reinvestment in the community. So that's kind of a, for those who like to look at a balance sheet, you could say those slices are balance sheet neutral, because it takes cash and turns them into a physical asset. And also, if you took a look at this slice compared to most other towns, this is one of the smallest slices as far as property taxes supporting operations. Normally, it's in the fifty to sixty percent range. Jim is ready with the microphone, so we're gonna do some discussion questions. Remember, there's no right or wrong answers. And these are questions that may be somewhat direct as to some of the discussion just heard, and some are more broad, just to give us an understanding of what happens in Madison. So what is it that you like living, what's you like most about living in Madison? We all kind of end up here in different, different reasons. Some of us may have chosen Madison because we did a thorough search and picked Madison for a certain, certain reason. Some of us, like me, might have been five years old and didn't have much choice in moving to Madison, but decided that I was not gonna go anywhere and stuck around because there's reasons why I like it. So what do you like about Madison? What I need you to do is, wanna comment on this, is raise your hand, because we're gonna capture it on tape as soon as Jim gets a microphone. Jim, I just found out the other day, Jim is a juggler, so maybe we'll have him juggle the four microphones until we find one that works.
I think we might be, have one working microphone that's charged right now.
Okay, so we might.
That's good.
Yeah, we can.
It's a good idea.
Yeah. Yep. Anyone wanna share what you like the most about Madison?
Yeah, hi Mayor. I appreciate the quality of services that we receive. Mr. Wolkowitz mentioned the police fire. I had occasion to visit the borough clerk's office occasionally over the last month or two, and I'd say, and I think somebody's here from the road department, Public Works, any contact I've ever had with an employee in the borough has been outstanding, and I think, you know, I'd just like to pass that on, response to the question.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else wanna share what you like about Madison?
Well, I would agree with everything he just said, but what I like about Madison is that there's so many things to do here. I love the train, because I like going to New York, it's very convenient. We have Drew University, where there's Shakespeare Theater, we have the Morris Museum, we have the Mayo Performing Arts Center. It is just central to seventy-eight, even to two eighty-seven, so it's very convenient. And this is a great town where you can, if you have any interest in anything, music, arts, performing arts, we have MACA, this is a great place, you're never bored.
Other thoughts on? All right, and all good to end, just echo a little bit about, not to add what more I like about Madison, but something Joe just mentioned is the fact that some of these things do affect on how we operate. It's great to have a university, does that change the way we have to run the borough? Yes. Great having a train station, it really defined what Madison is, but it does, does it do other things? So all the pluses affect what goes on. And of course, we always have to have some equal time. So what are the things that, you know, now that I've got the opportunity that I don't quite like about Madison? Or like the, as I always like to be positive, what do you like the least? Not what you don't like, but what do you like the?
Being born and raised in Madison all my life, what I like the least is that we lost the spirit. A lot of new people moved in town, which people loved to live in Madison, but years ago we had a little more spirit, you know, we had local cops. Now, everybody knew everybody, it was just a more, more spiritual feeling in Madison, that's what I miss the most. And I mean, you can't stop that, but also I miss so much traffic years ago. I used to be able to pull out of my driveway without looking, now I gotta wait ten minutes sometimes, especially now with the jets and all that. But again, like I said, I, we missed that spirit where everybody knew the cops, knew you, it was, it was a different feeling. And again, like I said, you can't stop that.
Good. Just a quick little, for those that remember, those that grew up in, you know, I remember the time, I think most people in the room have been here a long time, going from Park Avenue, from downtown Madison, to Maristown beyond, not a single parking or traffic signal. Remember those days? Columbia Turnpike, not even a traffic signal. Things have changed.
I don't think there's anything I like least about Madison. I, I just wanna back up a little bit to what I do like about Madison and to the point that was just made. I think Madison really has a sense of community. I went to a hockey, Madison High School hockey fundraiser last night, and I, everybody was just so happy and upbeat and talking with each other and supportive and contributing money. Everybody does that, everybody volunteers, and don't forget, we're all volunteers, okay? None of us are paid, we're all volunteers, and, and to do that really takes a sense of community and pride in the community, and all the budget things we're talking about are great, and I have some comments about that later, but I think the sense of community and family is terrific here. And it's supported, it's just encouraged, so that's great.
Thank you, John.
Just quickly, it's combining the two, they, we didn't bring up the school system, but that is certainly one of the positives of living in Madison. I mean, we've got a top-notch high school, top-notch system overall. We didn't talk about the downtown, we've got one of the best downtowns. However, even as that's a positive, this is a real challenge for the mayor and for Mr. Burnett and others. We have got to find a way to put better businesses into the downtown. People are competing against the internet, and if your business has the internet as competition, you're going to have a hard time surviving. That does not mean that Madison is gonna drive itself strictly through restaurants and nail salons and banks. So that's a real challenge.
Interestingly, just one second, Sam, so picking on Sam's theme and your theme is, one of the things that kind of comes up as our least list is the fact that times are changing and how, we can't stop changing times, but how we react to it is the challenge for everyone in town. Sam?
What I like least too is that, I don't like what's going on with the politics now, like that little thing that happened. And I, to make it a better town, in my opinion, is that, I don't know who can do it, but these meetings that we have, and even the Board of Ed should be on that cable twenty-one, and let the people see some of these meetings, how to run. And again, like I said, I don't like the, some of the politics that's going on. It's like, it's like a little game, instead of doing what's best for Madison and who's, you know, I like that the least, the politics in town.
Probably consistent theme in many towns.
I don't care about any town, I do care about Madison.
Yeah, echoing Sam's comment, I was sitting here thinking, wow, you guys are doing a great job on behalf of me. I, after fifteen or twenty minutes, I was bored, you know, with the numbers, because I'm not a numbers person, but you guys obviously did your homework, you studied, you thrashed it out, and then it seemed like it kind of deteriorated. And trumpeting on Sam's comment, I think we ought to do a way with Republican and Democrat when it comes to Madison. I think people ought to stand on their merits, make their positions known, and forget about labels. Thank you.
One thing that I like least about Madison, or there was a thing that could be improved, is open space. And I know this is difficult to do, but you know, some of the best towns have downtown parks. You know, if you go to some, they're Memorial Park, it's just gorgeous. And it's very hard here because everything's developed, but we have a great opportunity with the thirty-nine acres. And taking on what Sam said, you know, having a sense of community, like I think, like May Day, is just a great venue. I mean, that's just brilliant, to have people come out and take ownership. And that's what I, I think I would like to see, where there is, there's something about the town, with the people, and there's a lot of volunteers, absolutely, we have great volunteers. But you know, you see a core of people who do a lot, and then you see there's others who do nothing and take advantage, really. Everybody who lives here should maybe put in a couple hours to take, you appreciate things more. You know, even if it's just sweeping your gutter, or, you know, doing something for the neighborhood, making it easier for the Department of Public Works, who work very hard here, doing little things. And I think it's a, that's where I would like to see, if we had this focal point, something in town, bring people in, something that attracts people, more people, more businesses.
Thank you. I'm gonna, John would be the last, I'm gonna move on to the next one.
Yeah, I don't disagree. We have seven or eight people here this morning, that's paltry, that stinks. You know, we've gotta do something about getting more people in the community involved. There are a core number of people, myself one of them, you know, that volunteer as much as they possibly can, probably because we have the time to do it and the interest, but I think we really need to do something to generate more, which is to get more people involved. Just have to, that's critical.
No, Sam, I'm gonna move in, but, okay, you're, thank you. Just to reaffirm a couple things. One, I am very disappointed it's turned out today, it's, it's, it's great to see the faces we always see, our dedicated group, would like to see more. Talked about Rob beforehand, I said, I might propose the budget giveaways for town hall meetings so we can get people here. So, yeah, we might have to feed them more. And another thing, I just, on Jerry's comment about the schools, we are the top-notch school system, and you keep hearing us about, you know, the sixty-one percent is school taxes. And I want to be clear, that is not a statement by anyone up here saying our Board of Education's not doing a good job. The number, the fact I heard several years ago and is consistent, is the national average for reliance of funding schools through property taxes is forty-five percent. New Jersey funds schools through property taxes at the ninety percent level. So this is not a statement about what our local Board of Education is doing, but again, it's a statement of how we fund our schools. So that's just to clarify, and we're not gonna solve that in this room, there'll be a Trenton Town Hall meeting at some point. What municipal services do you appreciate most? And why? If you need a quick little refresher of, but I'm only throwing a refresher right now, but just the ones you, Sam?
The one I appreciate the most is the, well, I appreciate all of them, I mean, we do have beautiful service, and none, any towns don't have it, we have, but the one I really appreciate is the snow removal. It's the best around. And I really appreciate that because I have to go out and do some snow removal, I can get out and, you know, so that's, that's the, that's to me is one of the most, best services, the snow removal.
If I may, the Health Department is an awesome service, actually. I also like, you know, fire, police, all the safety things, the snow removal equipment is just great. We were talking about that at lunch the other day, you know, with Rotary, and we were talking about it vis-à-vis Atlanta, you know, and the crappy job they did with much, much notice, you know, and how good we do it. And we do, we do a lot of those services really well. I certainly like the idea of the shared services with the court. I think that's absolutely terrific. I think we need to do more of that and think outside the box, you know, like with the administration of the fire and police. I mean, I maybe be very naive here, and I don't know whether it's legally possible or not, but I certainly think there's lots of opportunities to think outside the box to do more shared services. That doesn't reduce the amount of services we provide, but it reduces how we administer them.
Jump ahead to the next question, so be careful.
I'm sorry.
So services, service you appreciate the most and why?
Yeah, well, I'll just throw in quickly, I mean, obviously you enjoy all of them, but electric and fire stand out. I mean, the electrical department has just been magnificent when we've had these ice storms, other towns have gone down, we've been out of sync for, they're out of power for days on end, and we're quickly back up. I live close to Drew, fire department must go by that house three times a day responding to various alarms that go off. I'm assuming that in most cases, they're false alarms up at Geralda, I don't really know, but they go pounding up, you know. We haven't had any serious problems that I'm aware of as far as responding, so the fire department does a great job.
Somebody over here? And the next one, I'm gonna combine these two questions, usually do it separately. Now, this is somewhat related to John's statement, so you don't have to restate it, but because you did a good job of it before. But what areas would you suggest that maybe we could, the borough should, could cut or save expenses? Or, on the kind of the more positive side, any other thoughts that you would have for revenue opportunities? So the shared services concept is a way of continuing to provide a service and bringing in revenue from another municipality to offset the cost to our own residents. So other thoughts along those lines?
Being a contractor, biggest way I can save money in my business is overhead. I strongly believe that Board of Ed in the borough, because as a taxpayer, they're supposed to represent us, we spend a lot of money on overhead. I strongly believe- I strongly believe that the Board of Ed should be on this side, they should get together, I don't know if they're going to sell that Green Village Road School, I don't think we sold it yet, but that house on Woodland Road, which is the headquarters, I think they should knock it down, keep it, and they got to fix this east side, and they can come over here, and then we can sort of, instead of having a superintendent for public works, an assistant superintendent, informants, then the Board of Ed has a superintendent of ground, the town is only two by two square, four square miles, you don't need all this overhead. Like I said, overhead is the key, and that's where the money's going. We got, just for the borough matters, and I think it's around ten million dollars. Like I said, in the real world, I can't go to your house and lay a hundred brick and bring three labors with me. It's overhead that we, that's the only place we can get the money, because you don't want to cut no services, it's in the overhead. So I believe that's, that would be a big thing, and then if the Board of Ed was here and the borough was here, like it's supposed to be, I think, you know, they can get the Mercedes-Benz of a copy, in other words, instead of each one having their own copier, and, you know, we got to merge, that's where the money is, in the overhead, and that's where we can save money. Don't cut no services or nothing.
Maintaining services, working on overhead, and to go, as John talked about, more of shared services with other towns, you're saying, let's even look within our borders.
Okay, thanks. I know a lot of property owners are going to hate me for saying this, but I think we should really, we can cut costs on this curbside leaf pickup. And I think we can, maybe, what I've been doing as a homeowner on Beach Avenue is bagging the leaves as much as I can, and I understand not everybody can do that, but another thing I've been doing is taking a lot of the leaves, finding areas in my yard where I can just dump them, and, you know, putting them under big trees or something, and just leaving them as compost. But I just find, and so I think if we as a community figure out a way to decrease the amount of leaves that we're throwing out, it's costly to pick up, it's costly to get rid of them, if we can work some things out, like, you know, if we think a little bit, it just seems that, you know, the leaf pickup, the people throw them out in the gutters, they sit there for weeks, like this year was terrible because of the snow, it gets plowed out, it gets thrown in, then they have to bring in the top loaders, it was, they came twice with the vacuum, twice with top loaders, this is expensive. So I think there we can figure out ways to save some money.
Thoughts on where to cut or other revenue sources? Sandy?
I don't know if it's, talking about the electric is possible at this point, but I hear that we're looking at cogeneration opportunities to help be able to stabilize our power costs. And I would just hope that we would include solar and other renewables that might not have such a volatile nature associated with them, because as Jim pointed out, the trading on natural gas, at just the time that we would have possibly needed it, was very high. So I know that solar would have a much longer payback period, but I just hope that that could be looked at by the municipality.
Self-sufficient. Any other thoughts of areas to save or new sources of revenue? Not intended to generate any controversy, but I can put up two statements, kind of guiding statements for the electric utility and possible how to look at rates. It is not a one or the other, obviously, but by, I want to get reactions to each of these, just so we can help understand the balance between rates and taxes. Again, that's my disclaimer, there is no, we're not going to have a vote on either one of these statements in the future, it could be somewhere in between, but two guiding principles. So one, electric utility will provide reliable market rate power with the proceeds supporting the operating and capital budgets of the borough. And just let that sink in for a second, a couple of key words I want to hit on there, and it's not to say we are there or not there right now, but I think one of the things, most important words, and every time I've done, gone around here, is reliable, that no matter what the guiding statement in, for utility is, I don't think anyone wants to give up the reliability. About five years ago, I had a conversation with a borough resident economist, he said you've got to sell electric utility. I think post-superstorm Sandy, I don't know, I haven't talked to him since then, but I don't think anyone wants to concede this, so that you'll see this as a consistent reliability. Market rate, and it's tough to define the market, but assuming, this assumes, we pay close to what neighboring towns do for the same power, but again, maybe a little bit extra because of reliability, and for the proceeds supporting operating capital, so I won't repeat, but you saw how, over the years, that has worked for Madison. Or, electric utility will provide reliable reduced rate power for residents or the businesses in Madison. Again, it's not one or the other, it's just to get a feel for what the audience feels about. So again, here it is, the reliability, but it would be below market because we own our utility and we're, that's the priority. So thoughts with either one of those? Or if you want to go into, I don't have a gray area here, but if you want to go in the gray area, go ahead.
Ben, I love your idea, I fit in that category, so follow through with that electric.
Congratulations, John. I'd like to, I don't, again, I don't know whether I've heard this before, or I'm talking out of my left ear or something, I don't know, but I would like to see, with the first one particularly, if we're going to fund operating and capital budgets of the borough, that there be a corresponding impact on the real estate taxes that fund the borough as well. So there's got to be, you know, if we're going to fund them, then there ought to be a corresponding decrease, you know, and/or an impact of some sort. That's got to be evaluated, I think.
So evaluation, and the other is an education, so that people understand that if this is the way, what is the benefit for each resident of Madison? Okay?
I support the first one, and the reason, I'm just looking at it environmentally, and because if you, the way I look at it, maybe it's not appropriate, but if lowered rates mean people will use more power, because people will say, oh, you know, I get great gas mileage, so I can just drive around like crazy. You know, we're looking at climate change, we're looking at the effects of greenhouse gases, and what that has made me do as a homeowner is reduce my utility bills, because I know that every time I turn on an air conditioner, somebody is burning coal or gas to give me power. So just looking at it that way, you know, if we make things cheaper, people will just kind of waste the power. And I would rather see, use less power and have less greenhouse gases.
But, Jerry, and then we'll go on to Sandy.
Just a quick one here, I, it's going to answer this with a question. Do we run the risk at some point of losing Drew University as a major customer, where they might put onto their own campus cogeneration or whatever it would take, and take Madison out of their system?
Certainly, market rate, there's a couple of things with Drew or any major user. There are limitations to self-generation within the borough, but Drew University is a different entity, and they have the right to go out on the open market, unlike any other business in the town. So yes, there is, and that's where part of this, key of this statement is market. If we're above the market, we could lose Drew, and it's also tough to justify.
Constantly monitor where we're charging versus what the market is, that's all I'm saying here. And I do have one question, which doesn't support this, but again, just for information, the old Shearing Plough Building, when I read the statement for Pfizer, as far as they had sold their building, it said that they were putting, they were taking three floors in the Shearing Plough Building, and of course, one floor has been occupied by lawyers, that would mean that that entire building will be filled. Do we have that reflected in our power rates as far as revenue?
Pfizer moved into Geralda I, so Geralda-
It's like the Shearing Plough.
Right. So, but, so but Geralda V, which is the largest of the buildings, is vacant, so.
And you've taken that revenue away, but my question is, Ben, running directly, occupied on the floor. Fifty percent of size of Pfizer, Pfizer is like six hundred thousand.
And, good question, we won't answer right now, but it does reinforce the comings and goings of commercial properties and the effect of the utility.
I think as a homeowner in town, I prefer us trying to keep the taxes low. With that being said, though, I guess I wouldn't, I'd want to make sure that we've kept that at a sustainable level, and not that we put so much money, subsidy money from the electric utility into operating, in case in one year we find that we can't do it any longer. At the same token, though, that makes me very, very nervous about talking about reduction in electric rates. From what I saw on these charts, if I understand them correctly, we only know what's happening up to 2015, and 2015 is the year that we're seeing where we actually have a decent surplus, but 2016 could be anything, and none of us really know what that's going to be. So I really would hate for us to start thinking about reducing rates lower than what neighboring towns pay on electric, for many of the reasons that were stated, also for the environment. The other thing that I would hope that the town does, and what Mr. Stevenson talked about, is one thing I think that you have to be aware of, if we're talking about the largest users making up so much of this money, I think you have to remember that every time somebody takes over a new space, they're putting in even more efficient lighting, et cetera, and I think it would be interesting for us to see on a square foot usage, how much Realogy, who did a lead build out, is using on electric, so we can start projecting these big square footage buildings into the future, because I think that that's going to be, that could, you know, have an effect. I mean, Realogy right now keeps their lights on twenty-four-seven practically, but at a certain point, when they start commissioning that building fully, they're going to really, I think you'll see a really lowered amount of electric that they're using.
Thank you. Any other thoughts on this? We've got one more, one last question. And again, I want to emphasize, this is for discussion purposes, you've heard a discussion before with the council, I'll be, I should return on this, coming to Madison big businesses.
Our cost of power is competitive with PSENG, we're, JCPN, who obviously has some delivery issues, we're not competitive with them, but we obviously laud our reliability, and that was significantly, that's a significant plus side. We laud the Fire Department, that's a significant plus side, having a professional fire department there, keeps their insurance rates down, so we do advance that, and as proven during Hurricane Sandy, when Pfizer and Marisk and others were getting a call from the mayor of Madison saying your power's going to be coming back up in an hour and a half, they weren't getting a call from JCPN, so I think all that type of coordination really helps. If someone's coming from the JCPN zone, yes. To answer Sandy's question, if you look at like the eighth customer, ninth customer down in the chart that was out there, it has Verizon in 2010, almost four hundred thousand in energy, Realogy, two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, so it's a significant savings to their outfitting of their building.
And the last, quick clarification I want to say is a, kind of a disclaimer again, because you've heard this discussion about, up here before, about each one, I'm not saying this is a statement representing opinions up here, or this is. This was just for discussion purposes. And this is the last one, last question. Here it is. You fell asleep, you woke up November eighth, and you realize you just got elected, you don't know how that happened. So here you are, you're sitting up here, either in one of these seats or in my seat, but remember, if you're in my seat, you can't vote. So what would your priority be, budget priority be, if you were sitting in the front of this room? Jerry wants to go first. Well, start off with Jerry.
Well, this would be, I think, fairly simple, which is the budget priority should be to try to hold the increase in taxes to as low a number as possible to assist our citizens who live in this town.
Sam?
Madison's a great town, we all know that, but we do need, and I'm glad we're doing it, the infrastructure, roads, the sidewalks, and I'm a firm believer that that's where it's important. But also, what's important from being in the business is that we're going to spend a lot of money, just make sure that we get our money's worth, and I can show examples of some workmanship that, you know, we didn't get our money's worth. I mean, you take South Street, we just did it a couple of years ago, it's like a rollercoaster. There's a water leak that's never been fixed. And if you, when you do this construction on these roads, make sure, in my opinion, because the other night at the meeting, we talked about trees and stuff moving with the roots and all that, that we use Belgium block, the granite, don't put concrete curbs, you know. And also, like I said, make sure these contractors do the right thing, and we're watching. I'll give you another example. Take the bank next to the funeral course from the diner, take Walgreens, and take the rental car place, they put pavers in, all different kind of pavers, different colors, different sizes, and the aprons in Walgreens, and in the car place, just done not even a year ago, they're moving all over because they were not put in right. They didn't go down a foot and put concrete like they're supposed to, especially with these big trucks. We're spending money, make sure we get our money's worth, and that's the key, so we don't have to, four or five years down the road, redo it again.
I guess, I guess one thing I'd like to see us consider going forward is each of the services that are listed here, for those that generate any kind of revenue at all, Health Department comes to mind, for example, is what's the extent to which they can become self-sufficient? Don't need to be funded by the municipality, the borough. Is there any opportunity for that? The Health Department, the library, Project Pride, something, anything. I don't know if those are the right ones, but I think we should take a really hard look at that and see what the opportunities are for them to become self-sufficient, and what increased revenue generating.
Microphone goes across, so a quick little recap on some of the comments we had, is do our best to control taxes. Look at our different entities, how can they be self-sufficient or less sufficient? Reinvest in our infrastructure, but do it wisely, and to reword something, don't take our curbs for granite.
And I'm coming here.
Thank you, sorry about that. It's a, we just hit the noon mark, we went past the party, so I figured out how to do it. All right. Sandy?
I think I want to echo what someone said earlier about, that the borough employees are so great to deal with, and I think that's part of our culture, and I just hope that in the budget process, we always remember that, and we don't look to make sure that, you know, we don't look that, oh, well, maybe, you know, nine people can do the work of ten, and, you know, we've gone down that road already, and I think that people are, you know, the departments are probably as lean as possible, so I would hope that the council would try and remember that, you know, a good part of the feeling of Madison, and the good feeling of Madison is, is that anytime you need to contact anybody in the borough, you find somebody that's very willing and happy, and it makes it a real community.
That kind of wraps around the theme we heard before, about the things we love about Madison, the great services, which take people to do it. We heard the comments about when people come into this building, how they're handled, and so that would, to keep that a priority. Any other thoughts on this last question? So thank you for your time and wisdom. I'd love to do more of these, if we can figure out how to get more people here, and my paraphrase of Si Sims, if people remember those commercials, an educated resident is our best citizen, so we'll do more and more to get the word out about what's going on.
Board of Ed and- Board of Ed and council, working, because this was brought up by somebody earlier, maybe John, to make something happen as far as Channel Thirty-Four, or Fios, and I don't know what the other one is, we've got a Madison channel, there's never anything up. I don't give a damn what the schedule says, I never see anything. I don't give a damn what the schedule says, I never see anything on it. And other towns, I guess it was Robert Kopaz was telling me the commitment that Summit has made over the years, and they really utilize their channel. It's being used all the time for, throughout the town for various events. It's an asset, we ought to put it to work.
Thank you, and we've been working on that, hopefully we can improve that. So we're going to go, I'm going to go back up there for item six, which is the opportunity to comment on anything, and that's the one that falls into the three-minute limitations, we'll pull out the lectern, so, and that'll be our last agenda item. So we've come to the part of the agenda.
Bob Jennings, 36 Albright Circle. Just following up on the earlier comment, Sam provoked me, okay, with regard to the political comment. I do want to congratulate the members of the council, the mayor. I do respect a great deal, the effort that you folks put in. As I said, you're obviously very, very capable people, and I meant no, if it was construed as a negative in terms of the political aspect of things, I certainly retract that now. What I'd like to talk about, yeah, on the item here, we have about road maintenance and construction. I don't know if everyone's aware of it, but we have in Madison a 40-ton, 40-ton road, truck depot off Sampson Avenue. There's obviously damage to the roads, okay? I'm mystified as to why nothing can be done about that.
Just to bring up to date, and we've had a lot of conversations, we've been working with the neighborhood in multiple angles, working with the owners of the property, those that lease the property. Regrettably, it has not resolved itself in a timely manner. We're also working with New Jersey Transit, because part of the property they are using is under lease agreement, New Jersey Transit. So we're using every possible angle to bring this back under control. There are, as the neighborhood's aware, it's a pre-existing non-conforming use that has evolved over time, and it's the, what has evolved and that we need to deal with. And so hopefully in the near future, as I spoke to one of your neighbors, that a goal of get this done before windows start opening up again in the springtime would be a great thing, and I think we're on track for that.
I think where the mystery comes in, Mayor, we have an ordinance, 18533, that clearly prohibits trucks larger than four tons in weight using Sampson and Kings. There's no possibility for these trucks to get into that property without using Sampson and Kings. And the matter has been under discussion for a year and a half. Any permits, any zoning issues, any environmental issues are kind of irrelevant if you simply read 18533. I'd love to have an answer to that.
And that has been, you know, we've worked on enforcement on that, and there are some challenges with enforcement, but we'll.
Did somebody articulate that challenge?
Didn't we have any things?
Because that's, there is a tone of frustration in my voice, and I apologize for that. But we hear these things, and, but no one can articulate a reason why summonses cannot be issued for a violation of the law.
Bob, what I'd like to do is follow up with having our traffic safety people talk to you.
They have.
In terms of how the enforcement works. And I know that the price of the ticket unfortunately is de minimis, and as such, if they really want to continue to have the trucks there, they could continue to pay the fine. I also know that there are certain regulations in terms of deliveries and such for vehicles that could potentially be over gross weight, but I don't want to speak out of turn, and would prefer to have the police department do that. But I want to echo what the mayor said, that we believe we have a more solid resolution that's going to come through a agreement with New Jersey Transit and the property owner that will basically eliminate, we hope, eliminate the larger vehicles on that property.
Jim, yeah, I understand that the violation is $22 per violation. There are approximately 10 to 20 violations a day, seven days a week. That adds up. I mean, if the reason you just gave me was the de minimis penalty involved, therefore we're not enforcing, that's not true.
Yeah, well, so as Jim, I know we've had, you've had ongoing discussions with public safety, but we'll, we'll take it back and we'll see if we can get more updates to the neighborhood. And again, it is my goal, and I think the council's goal, and also the goal of police and the staff in this building to bring this to resolution.
Mayor, is it appropriate to get a poll of the council people to see if that's the response that Jim just gave?
The, no, in this part of the meeting, we just.
We don't do that.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Sandy? You might want to come around the other side of, avoid that screen, I'd hate to have that come down on someone.
Sandy Golikowski, Park Avenue, Madison. I have a question, I don't know if this is the venue to get it answered in, but on the very first page after you flip it on the electric, it said kind of whatever the number was for what we purchased. Is there any place in that report that actually says what we, in effect, really did purchase in electric?
No, this is just budget appropriations. We literally get an hour-by-hour spreadsheet that is amazingly high volume, and to Pat's point, that's what American PowerNet uses to project the block purchases and to project load going forward. And to Jerry's point, load changes as buildings come occupied or unoccupied, or as you said, Sandy, when a building gets retrofitted. But these documents don't have the exact, but we can get, Robert knows them off the top of his head, we can get that actual consumption of kilowatt-hours if anybody wants it.
Well, I mean, you know, not that I specifically want it, but it would just seem to me to make sense that the council gets to see how well we're doing on that, and what, you know, if you can't see the numbers, then you can never figure out, are you doing a good job on it? Why did we miss some years and not others? Just to be able to get the reasons for it, I think that would be helpful. And it would also help us, when we look at the whole report, look and, you know, understand a little bit better. I know it's difficult, because you're saying that the whole accounting standard for electric, municipal electric utility is different than normal, but.
It is an overall goal to, you know, it won't be a separate business, but to look at the utility as a separate business, and also, it's a brave new world as we want to go in from the fixed rate contract to this managed approach, and so it's going to take more management on our side, and so I think it will be far more information shared, and so our council and everyone is fully educated on the decisions that have to be made.
And then my only other comment might be, I know that we talk about trying to get more community involvement, but I still think that sometimes it's kind of hard to figure out what's going on unless, you know, I mean, I found out about this meeting because I bought The Eagle before the weekend. Like, that doesn't always even happen. Sometimes I buy it on Sunday morning, when I buy the Sunday morning papers. And so I don't know what we can do about that, but we keep talking about, you know, more transparency, et cetera, and I just would hope that even, you know, talking about strategic planning, we don't really get updates, I don't think, as the public, or maybe I'm just missing them because I'm not coming to the meetings. I just would hope that there be some way to get more information out to people, so if people were interested in a certain subject, they could comment when appropriate, et cetera, or instead of, sometimes I think that it feels like when you come to the meetings, the decision's been made already, so what's the point?
Yeah, that's a good point. I think if we can figure out a way to get the word out. Sorry, Bob, there's only one shot at the.
Can I add something? I was, I meant to say this, but we kind of ended the electric discussion. Instead of looking at just the dollars, it would be very helpful if we were actually looking at the electricity consumption on an annual basis and on the APN reports on the actual, you know, month by month, and then do comparisons over the last several years, because dollars, as you noted, the budget, the way the budgeting is done, it skews the data in terms of when the money is really spent versus when it's accounted for. But having the actual kilowatt or megawatt hours consumed and the average cost of them would actually, I think, be much more helpful in terms of, you know, where are we projecting? Are we light, high, medium, whatever?
Thank you.
Mike?
The other question is, or maybe this is for Ben, for the strategic planning, the one group, it would be helpful if we added a, how do we communicate better with the general public? You know, enhancing our website, building a listserv, something like that.
Actually, I did, on that, I did mention to the chair that that is one of the things I want them to be looking at.
It's part of the operations committee's mandate.
Because we obviously, we can do a better job. I would have hoped to have seen at least half this room full, and maybe it was that the word didn't get out as well as we hoped to, so we got to, so, Mike?
Mike Giordano, Presswood Drive. I want to get back to the electric loss. How do we know that there is an actual electric loss when the estimated bills have been going out for I don't know how many years? And getting back to this automated system, how much is it really going to cost us to automate these meters? And then when we do automate these meters, get rid of our meter readers, and if there is a problem, we have nobody to go and check the problem, to go reread the meter manually. Now, if it is a car drive-by, that's fine, now we do have meter readers. But if it was a piggyback system, and how much is that piggyback system going to cost? Now we have nobody to physically go out and check these meters, other than our electric department who is, you know, inundated with work. The other thing is, why don't we spend our money, like Jim had made a mention, to generate our own power, make the money, instead of replacing these automated meters, hire your meter readers back, and just replace the old meters with new meters, maybe digital meters like they are, or go with an automated system with a drive-by, that's fine also. But at least you'll have somebody there. I mean, you're still going to need a customer service guy, or woman, but you're going to need a customer service person, but you also need a meter reader, per se, to go out and check these misreads, or if somebody complains about something. But if we get rid of them altogether, I don't think that's a great idea. That's personal, but I don't know how we say we're losing electric through our metering when we've been estimating bills for maybe 10 years. There's no way to estimate a bill and say we lost electricity through a meter. I mean, there is no way of doing that, because each section will get estimated at a different month.
A lot of those things, as the AMR project goes forward and before this council approves it, a lot of those issues need to be addressed, and it's good to, you know, the public service of, how do you do the follow-up? So there are a lot of hoops to go through and decisions to be made before we implement the program, so those are good points. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting and ask for adjournment.
I move we adjourn.
Thank you. Thank you for giving us your Saturday morning.